All right. Then I will call this meeting of the Riverside Township Board of Trustees to order. Please rise. And Trustee Carol, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Clerk Dropka, will you please call the roll?
Trustee Carol.
Present.
Trustee Clark.
Present.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Present.
Supervisor Will.
Here.
Let the record note that Trustee Blau is not in attendance and Clerk Dropka is in attendance. We have a quarrel.
Thank you very much. And I have somewhere misplaced my report, so I'm going to be winging it. I know, I had it in here. Anyway, so we have before us the minutes of the September 14th Board of Trustees meeting. Do I hear? What is your pleasure?
I will have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Motion by Trustee Carol, seconded by Trustee Highlandbach, to approve the minutes of September 14th. Are there any additions or corrections or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion is carried.
Supervisor Will, I abstained because I wasn't present.
Thank you. I have one abstention. Clerk Dropka? Then on to communications. Are there any communications?
No communications.
None at all? Oh my, okay. Then on to public comments. I don't see any guests here this evening, so we will move to the supervisor's report. And I had all kinds of wonderful details for you, which I have somehow promptly misplaced. But I wanted to report that we had a successful season with the farmer's market. We put out a total of $2,120 in redemption of the vouchers for the food pantry. I don't have the numbers like I should, but we had a very high, it was about a 70 or better, 72 percent, I want to say redemption rate, utilization of the vouchers, both in terms of how many of the people who got them used them and how many of the total vouchers distributed were used. We did have a few come in that had been actually issued the prior year, but it wasn't a problem because the way we marked them, I can identify who's using them. And the person who accidentally turned in, oh, no, the last year's that was fine. I mean, somebody, I don't know if the vendor was holding it or if the client was holding it. But then we also paid out one person who accidentally gave us an appointment card. Instead, they're the same size, but they look different. But that wasn't a problem because that same person did not utilize all of the vouchers that had been given. Other than that, we will discuss the bridge situation in a little while. The financial situation is no better. We still have not obviously received any more tax money, so we are really operating on gas, on air here. But I'm looking forward to finding a way of getting some funds for operations. We have a CD that is maturing later this month that will be converted to our money market fund. And otherwise, I did have a general assistance CD that I renewed at a respectable rate. Rates are coming up again, so it was over 4 percent. But we didn't need access, so that one I was able to let ride for a while. And let me see. Other than that, I've had a lot of applicants for general assistance and emergency assistance. The follow-through has not been terribly good, so although there are plenty of people getting assistance, there are a lot more applications out there that have not been returned. The back door to the building was replaced. It's just now pending repainting. And our security people also have, just for their internal purposes, it doesn't change the fact that they test doors and such, but they scan something. So we need a new one of that because that was attached to the frame of the old door. The security cameras have been helpful. Again, we've been able to identify some things that shouldn't be happening, and we've been able to correct those. Let me see. I had it all before me, trying to think of, oh, I want to thank Trustee Clark for representing us at the Tour de Proviso, the bike hike that came through town. She was there when they all returned to Guthrie Park at the end. That was the same day as we had the carpeting cleaned in the building, so I was here. We had some small items of information and some little tchotchke also that she was able to distribute. We had our shred event since our last meeting, and that also went well. And we did get a respectable amount of donations, both monetary and physical donations to the food pantry. Unfortunately, some of those in-kind type of donations were expired, but that always happens. So other than that, I'm sorry, I think there might have been one or two other items, but that's about all I can report. But I would gladly answer any questions if I've missed a topic that you were looking forward to hearing about.
Do you know how many pounds we did at this running time?
This time it was much lower. He pointed out that our spring-
He said it was like 3,500.
Yeah, about 3,500. Our spring event is always, people are in spring cleaning mode, and that's always a lot more. But we had a steady flow, as you know. Thank you to all those who were there. It was a good event. So I just had a, oh, I have decided not to attend the Township Officials of Illinois meeting in Springfield. We can be well represented by Trustee Clark, who is on one of the boards there, and she'll be attending. But at this point, I don't know that it would be beneficial for me to attend. So other than that, again, do you have any other questions?
Did we file a grievance with North Riverside for losing the chili cookout?
[laughing] I forgot about that.
I thought there would be an official strongly worded letter sent.
I think you were supposed to handle that, Trustee Carol.
Yes, I forgot. We did participate in that since our last meeting as well. We were very well represented. We got a lot of thumbs up for the chili that Trustee Highlandbach prepared for that event. So thank you for that as well.
I know Camilla Dropka really liked it.
Everybody I met, people were actually, I saw people bringing people over and say, "Try that one, that one's really good," and things like that. So, good job, good job. All right. Trustees' reports. Trustee Clark, do you have something for us?
The senior exercise class is still going strongly, and I will be attending the TOI State Conference in Springfield, you know, because I serve on the Board of Trustees. So we will be well represented there, since I have to be there from 7:00 AM Sunday morning till 2:30 Tuesday afternoon.
Yes, and I thank you for doing that, but I just-
It is a shorter meeting this year. There is only one lunch in the exhibit hall. There's a reception, but there's no dinner. There's no box lunch at the division meetings.
Oh, really? Oh, they're just meetings then? Oh, okay.
They are just meetings because the Crown Plaza has just raised our prices. The price is too much. It was $27 for a box lunch.
Wow. Yeah, everything, I think we can attest, everything has gone up greatly. All right, well, thank you, and thank you for representing us there.
My pleasure.
Trustee Highlandbach?
Hi, good evening. The mental health board met in September, and like the township, the mental health board is experiencing delays in our funds that we get too. We had to make second quarter grants after we dipped into our reserves to pay for some of the grants. Thank goodness we had reserves to dip into. So we paid the second quarter grants at 50 percent. The agencies understood, they're fine with it, and we will make up the money, of course, when we start getting money from our county, from the county. Other things, we are going to do another TV spot dealing with the mental health for veterans. Dr. Joe Trianti is going to spearhead that event, and I think it's something that is absolutely needed. It helps the veterans out with mental health issues. The CRC did a great job this summer, going to, they were at the Riverside Farmer's Market a couple of times. They were at Brookfield's more than a couple of times. I think they were there once or twice a month. They said that it was a great, great reception. People found out about the CRC, and it's starting to show with the amount of people that are coming through. You'll find the rest of my report in my notes. If anybody has any questions, feel free to reach out to me. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. And Trustee Carol, do you have anything for us today?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Onward to unfinished business. I have submitted to you what I just got this afternoon from the architectural firm. The cover letter says they've completed the bid analysis and contractor qualification services for the above referenced project, which includes two bids with one being disqualified by time of submittal. All additional bid paperwork appears to be in order, and in our opinion, the company is qualified to complete the work. Attached to this letter is the qualification forms and winning bid. The winning bid is Capital Industrial Coatings LLC of Hammond, Indiana. Should be noted that although the bid documents specify painting over the existing paint, the winning bid did indicate they are completely removing the lead paint. So two bids were received on September 27th, Capital Industrial Coatings LLC, in the amount of $433,833. And the disqualified bidder submitted, it arrived via UPS about 10 minutes after the deadline. And so it has not been opened, it has not been returned. They called later in the day to inquire how the bids went, and I reported to them then that theirs arrived late, so they understood. And so API says, feel free to contact them to discuss in greater detail. You have all of the materials about this. And so now we have a decision to make whether we can figure out a way to go forward with this. We are all well aware that the bridge needs this paint job very badly. And right now, we've been operating on reserves because the money just has not been coming in. So-
Well, we obviously have to get this done.
Yes.
But my concern is, is that we're not getting our money from the county. Thank God we have reserves, again. I can't reiterate that enough, or we'd be in a real, real bad situation. What is the process? What can we do to get to this capital without doing a bond issue of some kind?
Well, yes, rather than doing a bond issue, I've been back and forth with our attorney, and, you know, I've looked at the possibilities of borrowing against. We have money in the general assistance fund, but we can't touch that for anything but general assistance, and we really can't even borrow with that as collateral in good faith. So our best option would be to go for tax anticipation warrants, which is basically a loan against our future taxation, and that would be probably with our own bank. So I just met today via email the person at our bank that handles that and would walk us through their end of it. And Mike has indicated that they also can help us from that end. And we would then, I think we come to some terms in terms of how that would be handled, and then we have to pass an ordinance to approve going with that. It may be the time is of the essence. Our next meeting is on November 9th. It may be that we will need to call a meeting, an emergency meeting or a special meeting before then, but it's possible. I mean, right now, our reserves are, you know, we're really tapping them heavily.
Mm-hmm. So it's, we're just starting the process of this right now, am I correct?
Right. I mean, we have done nothing. We just have, we have just gotten to the point of, you know, being introduced to the right people.
Okay.
Yeah, I looked at other loans.
How good is this bid for? Is it, you know, some contractors say, "Well, the bid's only good for 30 days."
So this anticipates starting within 45 days, I believe.
Okay.
And that, I mean, the bids came in on the 27th, so, but it's 45 days from our notice to them that, of acceptance, basically. Just can't do that.
So what we're going to have to do then, and correct me if I'm wrong Supervisor Will, is you're going to have to get more information from our bank and so on, and with consultation from Mike. And then probably at our next meeting, we would have to make a decision fairly quickly or an emergency meeting of some kind. Am I correct?
Correct.
And I can look further into the procedures. I know there's at least an ordinance involved. You know, I'll have to double check and see what state your tax levy needs to be in if you're going to borrow against, you know-
Right.
You know, taxes essentially, or anticipated taxes. I don't know what effect that has on it too, but obviously the time is coming soon that you'd be opting a tax levy too, anyway.
Right.
So while I know some of the broad strokes of this process, you know, there's attorneys in the firm and ones that we work with outside the firm closely on these things, and I can get a better idea from them, all the ins and outs of the ABCs of putting this in place relatively quickly if need be.
Very good, that's great, and that would be helpful. But I myself, and this is just me, and I don't know what the other trustees would want, but I think it'd be smart to have Kenneth from API here at our next meeting or the emergency meeting that we have-
Sure.
-in case some of the trustees have some questions. For instance, you know, this $433, I don't want it to turn into $633.
Right.
I want to know what kind of, some guarantees that, you know, it's not the cost that, well, all of a sudden we find this, we find that. Otherwise, we'll be chasing money for a while, so.
Right. There are some of those terms in the bid form.
Right, I did read that.
Right. And I'm sorry, I couldn't get you this any sooner. I just got it back. I actually didn't have the bid.
It's fine.
Sure. Yeah, I don't know that we're ready to vote on the bid right now. I think we need to probably call a special meeting so that we can deal just with this item. Trustee Clark?
And then this $433,000 isn't due all at once. Wouldn't it be kind of like a down payment and then-
40 percent, I would guess.
Maybe a mid-payment and then a final payment?
That would be my understanding of it, but to be honest with you, the architect's kind of been steering this portion of it.
Okay.
Even what Supervisor Will forwarded this afternoon, I took a quick look at, but haven't gone through the ins and outs of it.
Yeah, right.
I think my involvement in these types of projects is, there's kind of a model, relatively standard contract that gets entered into, with, you know, some of the terms modified to the circumstances. But the architect would be probably the best source for-
Yeah, that's why I would want the architect.
Getting some of those, you know, how these work, and obviously he stays involved with the contractor throughout the process. There might be change orders, what's the process for that?
Right.
You know, certainly I think they need to get approval before significant expenditures above what's anticipated in the contract, but it's very industry specific, so.
Okay. I noticed that this contractor that put in a bid does absorb an amount of work on bridges. I mean, he does a lot of work on bridges.
Right.
And then maybe if we could get a timeline either from, I mean, that might depend on, you know, our funds and stuff, but it would be nice to get a timeline on, you know-
Right.
Start to finish.
You start to finish and when the payments are due.
Yeah, literally since we just got it today.
Yeah, I know. Sorry, I was too hard to-
We're all at a disadvantage, right.
And that's something that we can discuss at our next meeting or the special meeting or whatever. But I'm sure that all of us are going to have some questions on this.
Sure.
It's a lot of money, and I know it needs to get done. So, and I've always said from the beginning, along with the rest of our fellow trustees, that when we're going to do it, we're going to do it right. We're not having, you know, this little lackadaisical $10,000, $20,000 job, and then in 10 years-
Doing it all over again, right.
It's terrible. I want something that's going to last.
Right.
Okay.
All right. Do you want to look at calendars as far as a potential, I mean, we could just plan to meet on the 1st of November, which would be our committee of the whole-
Sure.
-and make that an actual, you know, potentially a decision-making meeting.
That works for me.
I'm fine with that.
Pardon?
It works for me.
Okay. Very good. Then that's already on our calendar, we just need to post it as a special meeting rather or-
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, special meeting. The same 48-hour notice, I think.
Right.
Is that at 6:30 or don't we use-
Those are scheduled at 6, I believe at 6:30. Okay. Very good.
First, I think.
So I think we've gone as far as we can on that discussion, and we will, we can move on to new business then?
Sure.
The, we have two special events rentals, both of which, let's actually, three special event rentals, all of which are looking for permission to serve alcohol. So the first one is a birthday party for November 5th. We do not have, I don't think we have any of the funds yet. We're not, actually, we were discussing it today, and I'm not sure that they realize because they did a rental earlier in the year. I don't know if they realize that the rates are higher. We had some back and forth about it because I thought that their last rental, there were some issues. We've had some correspondence, which you have. They denied, I can't prove, back and forth, so, I mean, they insist that everything was above board. We had some question. They had served, apparently, they said that they had served something called Heineken Zero, which is, I'm not familiar with it, but it was a non-alcoholic beer, but garbage clinked and clanked, so we had thought that perhaps they had served beer. Their last rental was requested very shortly before our meeting. Our agenda was already done, so that was an issue at that time. However, what is your pleasure? They would of course have to comply with all of our rules, and as I said, there's higher deposits and rental fees currently in place.
I say, what's your recommendation? You're the one that's had to deal with this alleged incident.
Well, I mean, in fairness, we didn't complain to them right away because we didn't expect there to be any alcohol, and then we had some suspicions about what happened. There was some staining. We've learned to tell people to do things a little differently. Carpeting was stained, it's been cleaned since then, but, I mean, I think that they would be on their best behavior and we would be alert to the situation. In fact, we would have to have somebody come in that day because their rental request is the day before the next rental request. As you can see on the agenda, the two dates are just a day apart, so somebody would have to come in and reset anyway. So anything that would happen would be taken care of right away. I, you know, I say, go ahead and do it. I mean, our notation after the last one was, oh, let's not do this again, but, you know, we've had some back and forth, and perhaps there was misunderstanding on both parts.
I make a motion that we accept the party for November 5th. The rules and regulations are clearly stated, and we'll be on, we'll be on alert if there's any problems, like we are for any other.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm not really too agreed about it.
Yeah.
So that's my, I make a motion.
All right. I have a motion by Trustee Highlandbach, seconded by Trustee Clark, to approve the birthday party for November 5th. And Trust, I'm sorry, Clerk Dropka, would you please call the roll on that?
Trustee Carol.
I will.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Will.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, then the next one is a group that we've had here before. Again, they are asking for November the 6th. This would be a community organization rental, so they have that somewhat reduced fee for it. And right now, they have provided certain items that we've requested, but they aren't completely in compliance, so we're in negotiation. They provided an insurance policy which doesn't have quite the name of our organization correctly. They just said Riverside. And even though they have to have the liquor liability, what they've provided us specifically excludes host liquor, so they've been notified. So again, this would be, they would have to be in compliance with our rules, but what is your pleasure?
I'll make a motion that we approve the November 6th request as long as they are in compliance with our rules, regulations and their insurance.
Okay. I have a motion by Trustee Clark. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it with Mary, Trustee Clark's stipulation as well.
Okay. Then I have a motion by Trustee Clark, seconded by Trustee Carol, to approve the Young Life Banquet for November 6th. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Dropka, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Will.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. We then have a request for a wedding reception. This would be in February of next year. Similar procedures here. This one was filled out in person, so again, it's use of the auditorium, typical auditorium kitchen, room 22, and they want some additional items here. And again, they do want to serve alcohol and food, so the usual rules would apply. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion that we approve the rental for February, I don't see it here.
18.
18. As long as they comply with all the rules and regulations that the township has set forward.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Trustee Highlandbach, seconded by Trustee Carol, to approve the February 18th rental to Ben Caruso regarding a wedding reception. Any discussion? February 18th rental to Ben Caruso regarding a wedding reception. Any discussion? Hearing none. Then Clerk Dropka, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Will.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. Initial discussion of the town levy. We, I don't have anything concrete yet because they haven't come out with any CPIs or anything, but it looks like everything will be going up. I would recommend that we would be going for our maximum allowable. Whether that allows, if the CPI exceeds the 5%, do we know what happens then?
It's been such a long time since that's happened. I don't know off the top of my head whether you'd need a public hearing.
Definitely.
To satisfy the rules on that.
But I wasn't sure if we could go to the CPI if it exceeds the 5%.
Yeah, which it likely might.
Yes.
Or does. So I will double-check on that.
Okay, thank you.
That is, the trend that everyone is doing is going to the maximum that they can.
Right.
So that's, you'd be in line with all the other government bodies.
Right. I mean, we're paying the same utility bills and like everything.
And it may, it may be required with the tax anticipation warrants, too. I mean, that you maximize.
That's true.
So that may be a factor in getting that process approved.
Okay.
That you go for the maximum.
Good to know. Okay.
But we'll.
All right, so that could all be interconnected. So if you would please do some research before that November 1st meeting.
Yes.
On that as well. Thank you. The question of purchasing holiday gift cards, I'm hesitant to recommend expenditures when we don't know where our money is going to be yet. So although I'm giving you the information of what we've done in the last and the past, looking at $45 to $50 gift cards for Thanksgiving and Christmas, I would say we can wait until the November meeting on this and see if, we may know it at that point better if tax bills will have gone out and so forth.
Sounds good.
Okay. We have an issue of, it's kind of generic. We, we've got notification, November 1st is our renewal date on our employees' health insurance plan. At the bottom of the sheet that's in, that's in your packets, there are some, so the current total monthly that is currently paid by the township, partly 20% of it being contributed by the employees, currently we're paying $1,954.74 a month. Our renewal in the same plan, which is what they call a transitional plan. It's not the old-fashioned, really cushy Blue Cross Blue Shield that there used to be, but it's, it's almost like that. However, as you can see, that rate is going up by more than $1,000 a month to $2991.56. So we could go to a, what they call an ACA plan, and you have there the comparative benefits. There's higher hospital facility charges, and there are some, some things are a little lower as a co-pay. Some things are higher. The family plan, there's a higher out-of-pocket limit. But to go to the new plan, we could, over the potential raise in the same plan, we would save roughly $260 a month. It still is almost $800 more a month than our current, current plan. So that's the best, I mean, I really would hate to go away from this. This is an HMO in both cases. So that would be one, one question. Do we renew in the same plan, or do we go to an ACA plan rather than the transitional plan? One proviso is that once you go to, you go away from a transitional plan, you can never go back. So that's, yes. They, that's kind of a, so we have to decide if some $25,000 a year is, is something that we could...
What about the employee cost? I know it's at 20...
So, yeah, the employee cost, that would be question two.
Twenty, twenty, raise that up by 5%?
So, well, we could do that. I mean, we have not done that before, but we could go up in their expense. As you can see, this already goes up, you know, the 20%. If we're going up by 800, then they are going up by a commensurate amount, going up by 20% of the total cost.
Oh, yeah, they're gonna, yeah, they're ready.
So you can see the bottom composite rate is what they would be paying now, and the one on the left, the current, is what, so it would be about double just, just going to the new plan.
Yeah.
A double for, okay, so that's double for one person, but it's, and it's about a third for the other. That's the other question. We currently have, we currently do it as a composite plan. So everybody pays basically the average. We could go to an age-banded plan, and that means that the older people will pay a higher rate. And I say this, basically, if we hired more people, or, you know, if these people left and we got other people, this would apply to everybody. So it's a policy decision we have to make here. So you can see, you know, the bottom three clusters, not the renewal, because I don't think we can afford to stay with the same, same transitional plan. And I think we have to go to an ACA plan, but that's, that's up to this body. I mean, again, it's 2,400.
So you're saying we should, that your belief would be the change of the plan to an age-banded plan?
Well...
Or a composite plan?
Well, we currently do composite. And so we just have to be aware that based on age, it could as much as double for somebody, or it could go up, you know, or it could be a third as much, you know, when you have the composite. If you go age-banded, then, I mean, everybody has an increase of something. But it's based on the age, it's based on the age of the employee. If there's family involved, they don't look further than just the employee in terms of what the age is. So, you know, in any event, if we don't stay with the current, if we stay with the current plan, we would go from $1,954 to $2991. If we go to the ACA plan, it would be $1,954 to $2733. So a couple hundred less than staying in the same plan. That would not change, depending on how we distribute the responsibility of the employees. I'm not sure offhand whether our employee manual says the rate that we currently charge in terms of, like, percentage of the premium.
Yeah, but the 20%, I mean, that takes out a big chunk of their pay as it is.
It is, it does.
So I recommend that we go with the composite.
Okay, stay with the composite.
Right. And, I mean...
And go to the ACA plan.
I would, I would say that that's our option. And, you know, we can always shop around next year as time comes on and see what we can get.
Yeah.
But we could go to the composite. We'll leave it at 20% for the employees. And that's my, my recommendation. You want to?
Do you mind if I make that as a motion?
Sure, I'll make that a motion.
Okay, so you, your recommendation is to go to the ACA plan as a composite plan?
Mm-hmm.
Do I hear a second to that motion?
I'll second that. I think that's a good, I think that's good, yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion by Trustee Highlandbach, seconded by Trustee Carroll, to go to the ACA Blue Cross plan, which would be at a rate of $2733.15 per month, and the, and to charge the employees the same 20% composite, on a composite basis. So it's the average on age.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Dropka, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Will.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. All right. You have in your files also the one-page annual treasurers report that we had to file. We've already filed it with the Clerk's office. This is based on the audited report, and it's a, and it's also been made available to the public. So that is just an informational piece. It really doesn't vary from what you already had in the audit report. There's just a reminder in your packets about if you intend to go to the Township Professors of Illinois meeting, registration is due. And at this point, I think you might have to make your own hotel arrangements. I think that it, they, they do the group only other...
And they're, they have sold out of the Crown Plaza and the three hotels next to it.
Yeah.
But they do...
There are other hotels in the area.
The Renaissance downtown, is it the Renaissance now?
I mean, across from Lincoln.
The, maybe it's the Abraham Lincoln Hotel now?
Yeah, it's Lincoln and Hyatt across the street.
Lincoln and Hyatt, it's not...
So you're taking in roommates, then?
Okay.
Because I'm at the Crown Plaza.
Okay, so that's just, that's informational. Welcome. Did you, were you here for a particular?
Thank you. I apologize for the disruption. I'm here just to endorse Riverside for the Field of Young Life.
It's already been approved.
Well, thanks.
It just, there are...
Any questions? Yes.
Yes, there are some, some questions on the insurance. I think Andrew's been in touch with your organization.
Yes.
We need that corrected. As long as you comply with all those rules and you take care of business, it's approved.
You bet. Appreciate that very much.
You're very welcome. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Supervisor Will, on the annual treasurers report.
Yes.
On the disbursements.
Yes.
$125,000. There's two names on there of trustees that are no longer trustees.
That was for last year.
But they weren't trustees last year either. Well, maybe Morrissey was, but...
Oh, you're, you're right. I don't know how I missed that. Yes, Morrissey would have been during the course, as you came on.
November.
In November, yeah. So Morrissey is okay, but the other one was, was incorrect for, for that period, right?
Yeah. Yes, that's what, because, well, we were...
Well, no, actually, so...
He was there for a cup of coffee.
He was there, yes, because, no, it is correct. Because we, the fiscal year started April 1st, but we didn't take, this board didn't take office until May 14th or so.
Right.
But wasn't that in?
No. The, the, April 1st until May 14th, there was a paycheck in there.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Right, right. Yeah, it's, I know, it gets, I thought, oh, wait. But no, that is correct. Thank you for catching that, both of you. Yeah, it is correct, but both of them had some pay. Okay, then we are on to the approval of warrants. And Trustee Highlandbach?
Trustee Highlandbach moves that the board authorize and ratify payment of the bills identified on the general warrant for October 2022 in the amount of $28,623.68, as presented to the board this 12th day of October 2022.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Highlandbach, seconded by Trustee Clark, to approve the general warrants for October 2022 in the total amount of $28,623.68. Is there any discussion? If not, Clerk Dropka, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Will.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Motion by Trustee Highlandbach that the board ratify and authorize payments of the amounts indicated on the following warrants. The utility warrant for October 2022 in the amount of $1,165.79. The payroll warrant for October 2022 in the amount of $19,843.34. The health warrant for October 2022 in the amount of $2,199.37. Grants from October 2022 in the amount of $1,980.78. Petty cash in the, for October 2022 in the amount of $108.08. The general assistance warrant for October of 2022 in the amount of $4,029.89. The township radio players warrant for October 2022 in the amount of $200. And the food pantry warrant for October 2022 in the amount of $1,654.42. All of the above is presented to the board this 12th day of October 2022.
Thank you. I have a motion by Trustee Highlandbach. Do I hear a second?
I will second.
I have a second by Trustee Carroll for the approval of the following warrants for October 2022 in the amount of 100, I'm sorry, $1,165.79 for the utility warrant, a payroll warrant in the amount of $19,843.34, the health warrant in the amount of $2,199.37, the grants warrant in the amount of $1,980.78, the petty cash warrant in the amount of $108.08, the general assistance warrant in the amount of $4,029.89, and radio township players in the amount of $200, and the food pantry warrant in the amount of $1,654.42. A motion and a second to that effect. Is there any discussion? Then Clerk Dropka, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Clark.
Yes.
Trustee Highlandbach.
Yes.
Supervisor Will.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Just noting that you have the financials. You can see, oh, the one thing that I failed to mention earlier, it will appear on the next month. We did receive just this week some purple, personal property replacement tax in the amount of $23,700 and change. So we got something at least this month, but otherwise, there's, you will note, there's nothing coming in on real estate taxes. So that concludes the business on the agenda. What is your pleasure?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion by Trustee Clark. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion second to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion is carried. Thank you.